Good evening, and I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Thursday, July 17, 2025. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Cosse.
Here.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also present, Clerk Stenzel.
Thank you. We have a quorum for tonight's meeting. For the President's Report, I'd like to begin with the appointment of the appointment to the Village Advisory Board and Commission's appointment of new members. Tonight, we have four new members who volunteered their time. This is one of the most important things I do as Village President, and certainly is important to this village, is the volunteers who give their time and energy and talents to the village, their own time, their own energy, and we appreciate that greatly, especially in this sesquicentennial year where we're celebrating all the volunteers throughout the 150 years of this village who have made this village what it is. So, may I have a motion in a second to confirm the following appointments. Valerie Kramer, Landscape Advisory Commission; Matthew Graham, Planning and Zoning Commission; Ashley Bodak, Preservation Commission; Paul Bronstetter, Riverside TV Commission.
Motion. Take a second.
Motion and a second. Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Cosse.
Aye.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Welcome to service in the Village of Riverside. Before you leave, though, Clerk Stenzel will call each one of you up to be sworn in.
Valerie Kramer? You're right behind me. So you're going to repeat after me? Raise your hand, please. I, Valerie Kramer.
I'm Valerie Kramer.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
On that happy side. Thank you very much. I have Matthew Graham. I got this right over here. All right, you can read it here, and you can also repeat after me.
Sure.
I, Matthew Graham, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Matthew Graham, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I have Ashley Bodak. The President will swear in later. And Paul Bronstetter. All right, you heard the drill.
Yes.
I, Paul Bronstetter.
I, Paul Bronstetter.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Riverside TV Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Riverside TV Commissioner for the Village of Riverside.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Yes, perfect. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your service to the village. Just a couple of other announcements I'd like to make. One is, I wanted to tell everyone that Manager Francis and I had the privilege of attending the ribbon-cutting celebration at Brookfield Zoo for the James and Elizabeth Bramson Tropical Forest. This is the primate house, the big shed that we've all been to. What they have done there is incredible. Please get out there. You'll be doing yourself and your family a favor. Get out there, see it. It's really remarkable. You could literally get this close to the animals through glass, of course, as opposed to before. You were looking down and they were pretty far away, but it's really amazing. Brookfield Zoo is such a wonderful place. We're so fortunate that they're with us. So congratulations to the zoo for this great accomplishment, and again, I encourage everyone to get out there and see it. And finally, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in our another great July 4 weekend in Riverside. July 3rd and 4th is the social event of the year in Riverside. It has been since I've been here, and it will continue to be that way, and that's thanks, again, to volunteers, friends of the Fourth, volunteer group who saved the events some 16 years ago, and continue to contribute time and raise money to conduct the events. Our Police Department, our Public Works Department, especially our Parks and Recreation Department that organizes and manages the whole thing. And special thanks to everyone who attended the July 3 Guthrie Park Concert, as well as the July 4 Parade. Another great weekend in Riverside, so thanks everyone for their contributions. We do have some upcoming meetings. July 21 is the Historical Commission Meeting here at the Village Hall, 6:30 p.m. July 23, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Village Hall, 6:30 p.m. July 28, Parks and Recreation Board Meeting, Village Hall, 6:30 p.m. August 4, Riverside TV Commission, again, at the Village Hall, 6:30 p.m. And then our next board meeting is August 7, here in the same room, 6:30 p.m. That concludes my President's Report. Trustee Reports start with Cross-Community Climate Collaborative C4 Update. I understand Planner Siren will present that for us.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Staff is reviewing the priorities of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan and will bring forward any capital or operating expenses for consideration during the budget discussions, which will begin in August. Just a note, the Energy Survey is still available for resident participation, and there will be some additional opportunities for resident feedback in the coming weeks. Staff did conduct stakeholder interviews in developing the energy plan, the draft of which is anticipated this fall. And just as a note, the C4 team selected a winner of the Sesquicentennial Spring Photo Contest, and the photo was of the Howser Junior High Food Composting Program.
Thank you. Trustees, anything to add to that report?
Not to the C4 report, but we do have a 150 report.
Would you like to proceed with that?
I would love to, thank you. So glad you asked. So, C4, I'm sorry, the 150 Committee is at the Farmer's Market every Wednesday during this season leading up to our big incorporation weekend in August. August is full of activities that I think we shall put on our calendars. August 1st and 2nd at Howser Junior High, there are free one-act play festivals called "Bends in the River," which is put on by the Glacier Players and the Riverside Theater Guild. This is free to the community to attend, and it was featured recently on WGN Radio. And they've just done an absolutely wonderful job recruiting local creative talent for the writing of the plays themselves and for the performance, so don't miss it. The following weekend, of course, is Riverside's 150th anniversary. So on that Friday, August 8, the Riverside Slow Roll will kick off from Ride Riverside, leaving from the train station at 6:00 p.m. and departing and arriving at Big Ballpark in time for the 7 o'clock concert, which we're calling a homecoming concert, featuring the Nashville Electric Company. So that's going to be a fun evening. On Saturday, August 9, the Riverside 150 Family Friendly Festival is going to be taking place in Guthrie Park from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this is generously sponsored by our Riverside Festival sponsors, who include Dig Right In Landscaping, Senator Mike Porfiriio, Riverside Bank, Riverside Chamber of Commerce, and Riverside Swim Club. And it is also, would not be possible without our amazing community groups, many of which are going to be presenting games for the community to enjoy, free of charge. So be there, it's going to be a wonderful time for us all to gather in the park. That evening on August 9, we are having an elegant ticketed Sesquicentennial Soiree at the train station. The Brian Patty Orchestra will be playing on the West Platform, and the music will waft out over Guthrie Park for all to enjoy. So you're welcome to either attend the soiree or come and picnic in the park and enjoy some fabulous music, starting, the band will be playing from 7 to 9. And it has generously been sponsored by the Riverside Township. The soiree has many other wonderful sponsors, including Rory Dominic Realty, Heitzman Funeral Home, Jeff's Auto on Quincy, Riverside Junior Women, James Megalski DTS, Wright Services. We also have in-kind sponsors for the soiree, including Aris Brewery and Cider House, La Barra, Minuteman Press, Arm Arts, and Riverside Foods. So we thank them for their generosity for that evening. We certainly cannot forget our big sponsors, our Riverside Forever sponsors, for all of our year-round activities, and they are Riverside Bank and Flood Brothers. They are making things possible from our Farmer's Market appearances, to our various time capsule contests and the time capsule itself. All of that is very much appreciated by the community and enjoyed by different segments of our community at different times. So, I mean, it's really wonderful to see how this has brought all of our residents and our community groups together, and it's just really something that is that spirit of volunteerism again, and that giving that makes Riverside such a very special place. So thank you, thank you all. That evening, I cannot let this report go without mentioning, for those who are interested in attending the soiree but are not sure what fun their kids can be having at that time, the Riverside Parks and Rec Department is offering a popcorn pizza and pajama party for kids that are 5 to 10 years old. Registration is required for that one through the Parks and Rec website. Again, there's still opportunities to get involved if you would still like to get involved. We have a trending article on the homepage of the Riverside website, which will let you sign up to volunteer for either the soiree support or the festival support during the day on August 9. So please check it out, and thank you once again.
Thank you, Aberdeen. A lot of great events in August upcoming. I encourage everyone to go to our website and investigate and attend as many as you can, but I might get in trouble at home if I didn't mention that the "Bends in the River" performance at Howser, August 1st and 2nd, has some incredible talent in that area. So I encourage, and it's free.
Yes, it is free.
So I encourage everyone to attend that. Other trustee reports, Alex.
So Aberdeen took everything I was going to say, but that's okay. Now, when we look at all the volunteerism that's coming into this celebration, it brings together the entire Riverside universe, business owners, organizations, et cetera. But I do want to let people know that if you do want to get involved, because for the last 150 years, this has been a community of volunteerism. The library will be hosting a community organizations event that will have all of our organizations there to represent what they do, let people know how they can get involved, their mission, et cetera. And so I would encourage our residents who may not be so involved and want to, to attend that when it will be held at the library on Saturday, September 6, from 10 to 12.
Thank you. Any other trustee reports? Manager's report, Manager Francis.
Thank you. I just have one item that I wanted to report on, but it is very exciting. Emily will be pulling up an interactive map that will be going live next week on our village website. So this map incorporates all of our capital planning and infrastructure that we're doing this year, and it's a heavy lift. Director Tab, I know that you all and your team are doing an amazing job of working with work engineering to navigate all of these different projects. I would say that this is probably one of the busiest years since I've become Village Manager for capital projects in Riverside. We appreciate residents' patience, but if you're interested at the different improvements that are occurring throughout the village, you'll be able to tap on the various sections of the interactive map. You can see it in its entirety for an overview, but then you can see where we're doing specific sewer separation, where we're doing water main replacement, lead service line replacement, crack sealing, and then also our pavement rejuvenation program. And it also provides various descriptions when you click on the various headers at the top of the page to provide you an overview of what that work is. The area in which the work is taking place is then highlighted on the map. So if residents have any questions, they can certainly reach out to myself or Director Tab, but I think this just highlights Riverside's reinvestment in our infrastructure, which, when you have an older community, you have to make sure you're doing that. So that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Now's the time for public comment for non-agenda items. If there's anyone in attendance who would like to address the Village Board, knowing that as we go through the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak specifically to the agenda items, but is there anyone who would like to address the board on non-agenda items? I see none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Stenzel, please read the consent agenda.
Ratify voucher list of bills, June 20, 2025. Ratify voucher list of bills, July 3, 2025. Approve voucher list of bills, July 17, 2025. Approve Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes, June 5, 2025. Approve Village Board of Trustees' Executive Session Meeting Minutes, June 5, 2025. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Ad-hoc Sesquicentennial Planning Committee, Rescheduled Meeting Minutes, May 20, 2025. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Special Meeting Minutes, April 8, 2025. Economic Development Commission, Regular Meeting Minutes, March 12, 2025. Landscape Advisory Commission, Regular Meeting Minutes, May 13, 2025. Landscape Advisory Commission, Regular Meeting Minutes, June 10, 2025. Parks and Recreation Board, Regular Meeting Minutes, May 19, 2025. Preservation Commission, Regular Meeting Minutes, April 10, 2025. Riverside Historical Commission, Regular Meeting Minutes, May 19, 2025. Review and File Department Monthly Reports. Police Department, May 2025. Fire Department, May 2025. Public Works Department, May 2025. Finance Department, May 2025. Police Department, June 2025. Fire Department, June 2025. Public Works Department, June 2025. Community Development Department, June 2025. A resolution authorizing the Village Manager to waive certain fees associated with the commercial filming application submitted by Mighty Eighth Media for the Can-Strup Case Study featuring the Village of Riverside. A resolution authorizing the release of minutes of a closed session meeting of the Board of Trustees. A resolution approving an agreement for purchase by the Village of Riverside and its Contractor Client First Consulting Group of computer-stored information of the Illinois Secretary of State. And a resolution authorizing the Village Manager to waive competitive bidding and issue a purchase order for an amount not to exceed $28,000 to Lauderbach and Amen for temporary accounting services.
Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. Clerk Stenzel.
Trustee Cosse.
Aye.
Trustee Marshawka.
Aye.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Consent agenda is approved. Department, Board, and Commission Reports, we have an update on upcoming events. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I have just two items to report on because Trustee Marshawka did a wonderful job of providing an overview of all the upcoming 150 events. Thank you. We have two items. Our July movie in the park is next Friday, July 25, and based on community voting, the movie will be Shrek. The movie will start at approximately 8:30 p.m. at Big Ballpark, and Able Creations will be on-site selling charcuterie boxes and snack cups. Registration for the 18th Annual Corey's Triathlon is taking place online currently and also at the Quincy Community Center. Registration will be available until Monday, August 4, at 9 a.m. There will be no registration available after this date or on race day, so please make sure to register in advance. That is all I have.
Thank you. Pending business, we have a discussion on the local grocery tax. Directors of Allah.
Good evening, thank you. The repeal of the statewide 1% grocery sales tax is set to take effect January 1, 2026. As part of the repeal process, non-home rule municipalities were given authority to implement by ordinance a 1% locally imposed grocery sales tax without need for referendum. This local grocery sales tax would go into effect January 1, 2026, and cannot be less than 1%. It is important to note that this is not a new tax and would only be maintaining the tax that is already proposed, just moving it from a statewide function to locally imposed. The tax is assessed on the following items: food sold for consumption off the premises that include grocery items and packaged foods, excluding candy, soft drinks, prepared foods, and alcohol. In order to have the tax maintained for January 1, the village would have to adopt and send in an ordinance to Illinois Department of Revenue by October 1 of 2025. Currently, LaGrange Park, Countryside, Brookfield, LaGrange, and Berwin have passed an ordinance maintaining the grocery sales tax. Other surrounding communities are expected to be presenting the matter to their boards as well. Attached in your packet is a list of all municipalities in Illinois that have already passed the ordinance. What does this mean for the village? The financial impact. Last year, the grocery sales tax revenues received were $42,525. This revenue is derived from grocery sales tax from a grocery store and other various stores throughout the village. The forecasted revenue over the next 10 years is estimated to be $502,000. The annual impact may look small, but compounded over 10 years, it does make a large impact to the village. The Board has the option to adopt the ordinance to maintain the 1% grocery tax. If no action is taken, the grocery tax will automatically be repealed January 1, 2026, and the village does have the option to pass the ordinance in the future if they choose to. So staff is asking that you please discuss and provide guidance as to whether to proceed with drafting an ordinance at this time.
Thank you. Before I open it up for discussion, just a couple of things. One is, I did ask Manager Francis to contact the owner of Riverside Foods, which is not all of that tax revenue, but a good portion of it. And we did get an email from Peter Bootsakakis indicating that he would recommend that the Board not impose the tax. And I also wanted to mention a couple of other things, and this is just really my own take on this, is I have hesitancy to impose this tax, although certainly that's not my decision, it's the trustee's decision. The reason I have hesitancy, I guess three reasons. One, perhaps the most important, is that Riverside Foods is a critical business to this village. At any time we can do anything to show support to them, I think we should at least consider it seriously. Two is the reason that the State of Illinois eliminated this statewide grocery tax is because it is a regressive tax. Everybody has to buy food, so the less money household income you have, the more it impacts you, and the greater the tax impact on the household. And number three, I think also it's an opportunity maybe to reduce the tax burden a little bit on our residents. But again, I always hesitate to give my opinion before you have your discussion because I want you all to make those decisions, but I thought in this case that it would only be fair that I do that. So having said all that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Do we want to hear public comment first, or do we want to...
We can do that. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Mr. Bootsakakis would have been here, but he is out of state. Trustees, any other thoughts, comments? There's one other thing I did want to mention, and that is that this isn't a one-time opportunity. If we don't do it now, we can reconsider it next year or any year after that unless state law changes. But as of now, the state law allows local governments to impose this tax now or next year. The only calendar issue is if you're going to impose it, you know, they'll start collecting it in January, so you got to do it by September each year, so.
What's the date? We have to let the state know we want to do this?
For it to go into effect, January 1st would be October.
Everything needs to be filed by October 1st.
It has to be approved and in the mail by October 1st.
And we won't be completed with our annual budget before then, will we?
I can say that if we choose not to go forward with the tax, that we will have to review the annual budget and look for other ways where we will have to either decrease services or increase other fees to make up for the revenue.
I am not in favor of the tax. We're taxed enough as it is, in County and the state, and at this time, it wouldn't be the most appropriate route. If it's something that needs to be addressed later on in other fiscal years, then we can talk about it at that time.
I would also prefer to not impose on it. However, I do remember very clearly the scream we had before us on us not being able to afford to salt our roads for the regular consumer and to have the proper equipment necessary for their use. So I don't know if staff is confident enough to find other sources of revenue to come up with covering the shortcomings that we'll have from this.
We will figure that out in the budget time, I guess, if we don't, if we're not going to include this. And we can talk about it tonight, we don't have to take action tonight. In fact, it's not on the agenda to take action, so it can come back at the August meeting or at the first meeting in September. But if you're ready to take action, we can certainly do that. Or we can direct staff to prepare an ordinance, or we can just continue the discussion to another day. Yes, Trustee Evans.
So I understand that if we decide not to pursue an ordinance or pass another ordinance, then we'll be short $50,000, $42,000, is that what it is? But I'm kind of wondering if there are other areas of revenue this year that came up ahead of what we expected? Like, is there any way that, do we know for sure that what the budget is for next year?
No.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if we can exactly say we're going to have to, I'm not comfortable saying we're going to have to increase fees or decrease services with just this one decision without having... just this one decision without having actual figures or data to support that. It seems aggressive.
Is there anybody got any financial forecasts for stuff that's already happened for the first half of the year, so we can see that we might come out ahead in other areas?
So it's quite volatile, some of our revenues right now. Like, if you look back in May, our building revenues were down. We saw a bit of a recovery where it's back on target, and so there's been lots of fluctuation over this past year, so it's really difficult. We're working on, currently we're compiling data as it relates to the financial forecast, which then we use as a jumping point into the budget discussion. But we haven't, you know, put together those final numbers, we're still in the process of compiling data. Right now, we are close to being on target with budget, but always recognizing that our margin between the revenues that we receive and our expenditures are always pretty close. And we have vacant positions in which other staff members have taken on those roles, but they don't necessarily have the capacity to do that long-term. You know, you can only ask salaried employees to work 60 or 80 hours, you know, every week for a certain amount of time before. And so there's a lot of different considerations at play, so I can't provide you a very concrete answer at this exact moment until we've reviewed more of these data points. Because, you know, we remember, our revenues are always in arrears by three months for anything that is collected by the state of Illinois, and so there's always that quarterly delay, too.
Okay, thank you. So it's great that we're able to bring the tax back in later years. So I think my decision would be to pass on imposing the tax for a year and then maybe revisiting next year.
For 27.
Yeah, I would agree. Again, I don't like that this is a regressive tax. It hits our residents who are lower income more than it hurts our residents who are higher income on food, right? This is not a luxury item, this is not something that people can be like, oh, you know, we don't have to have food. I think that this is, I think that would personally, if we had to make some tough decisions with budget and raise costs someplace else, raise fees someplace else, I think I would rather look at some other places to raise fees than impose this tax at this time.
And before we make that decision, could we have some of those suggestions by staff for a future meeting?
For what fees would need to be raised? That'll be in the budget process.
Which would be after the time that we're supposed to have this done?
Correct.
But we couldn't have that any time before then? We can ask for our August meeting or...
That's a lot, it's a lot more difficult.
I know, I know, I'm asking for a lot.
We can try to target the end of August, early September for some of that, but I have to, I haven't even reviewed some of those preliminary numbers, because finance department's still in the process of compiling them.
I mean, I realize that we're probably looking at Riverside Foods mainly, but there's other ones, and Riverside Foods is currently our biggest taxpayer right now, so I don't want to keep hitting them over and over again, and like trustee Koss said, it's hurting our own residents, really, by mandatory tax.
Well, and honestly, to me, it doesn't, this is me, but to me, it doesn't matter. I understand that like putting together the fees and the stuff is important for us to look at, but again, it doesn't, I would rather raise a permit fee or some other fee that's not a regressive grocery tax, that's not on groceries. That would, to me, it's not that it doesn't matter what we would have to raise a fee on, I would, because I don't want a regressive grocery tax. So I would, so I could take any fee and be like, okay, if that's what we have to do, rather than the grocery tax, is my opinion. Sorry, Everdeen, I think I kind of jumped in.
That's okay, I was just going to agree with you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the regressive piece of it is the most disturbing piece. And just given that, you know, with our C4 efforts and our, you know, emphasis on trying to provide a discussion of equity, every time we consider a new proposal or policy, you know, I think that even though all of our neighboring communities are seemingly jumping on the "let's keep the tax bandwagon," I think we owe it to the effort to be the outlier, to be the, you know, municipality that says, hey, let's look at the equity piece. So I would agree that we should not proceed with it at this time.
Thank you. I'm not quite ready to admit that we would have to cut services or raise fees, but in theory, that is true. But I do think, following up on the regressive tax issue, some fees and taxes are discretionary. You could avoid them if you don't want to pay them, you know? And so, but this one isn't, because as you said, everybody's got to buy food, and we hope they buy it at Riverside Foods.
They should.
And at our convenience stores.
We have, what, three other convenience stores on Harlem Avenue, or did? I mean, 7-Eleven was one of them, now they're gone.
We have two now.
And now we just have R-Mart and the Marathon.
Right. And I'm not sure, but I guessing those are 99% of this grocery sales tax, or 100% even?
For the...
Those three businesses?
For the gas station, yes. You know, between those and then any other businesses that may sell, like directors of Allah said, items that qualify within those different classifications.
If there's even a job at Riverside Foods if people don't want to pay the extra 1% tax in their communities, they...
Shop local.
Shop at Riverside Foods.
So the direction, consensus is not to proceed with the grocery tax for this year?
Yes.
For 2026?
For the calendar year 26, right?
Okay.
And to revisit it again next year.
I think that makes the most sense.
And we also have time to get additional feedback from residents between now and when the resolution comes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Directors of Allah. New business, I'm sorry, still pending business, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 2 of the Village Code relating to animals. Planner Siren?
Thank you. Previously, in April, the board discussed this issue and directed staff to modify the current animal keeping regulations to include pets that aren't currently licensed, and stated that these pets should be subject to regulations for number, condition of keeping, et cetera. So the purpose of the ordinance before you would require that pets that are regularly kept outdoors to be licensed and for the owners to follow standards to prevent them from attracting rodents or causing nuisance. So it would not apply to animals that are kept indoors, it would not apply to dogs, cats, hens, and bees because they are already licensed by the village. So which animals would this apply to? Again, not currently licensed by the village, that aren't prohibited by the village code. We already have a list of prohibited animals. That can be permitted to be kept as pets by the state and federal laws and that are regularly kept outdoors. So this could include, but wouldn't be limited to, birds, chinchillas, ducks, ferrets, geese, hedgehogs, rabbits, and sugar flyters. The ordinance would require owners to obtain an outdoor pet license using the same fee structure as hen licensing. Owners could have up to five outdoor pets. That would not be inclusive of dogs, cats, hens, bees. If owners have more than five outdoor pets when the ordinance is approved, the additional pets would be grandfathered in and noted on their license. They would just list the additional pets. That's the same as we did when we started licensing dogs and cats. The license will renew annually if there's no complaints, and the village can suspend or revoke the license if there are justified complaints that aren't resolved. So the ordinance is approved. Staff is aware of two property owners who'd be subject to the ordinance and have notified them and discussed, notified them of the ordinance, when we were able to discuss the ordinance with them and answer questions. The other, we've reached out a few times. And the village will provide general notification to the public about the requirement to obtain a license. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff?
I like that the initial fee is $100, but if everything goes well, there's a reduced fee for renewal. That's a really nice addition. Do we do that for hens?
Yes, we do.
And bees? Thank you. This is great work.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public with any comments on this item? Any further discussion from the trustees? If not, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make...
Motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Stenzel?
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Marshawka?
Aye.
Trustee Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Motion approved, ordinance approved. New business, resolution approving a hardscape permit application for the installation of brick pillars to be located in the public property setback at 415 Nuttall Road. Director Tab?
Good evening, everyone. In front of you is a hardscape permit application for two brick pillars to be installed at 415 Nuttall Road that would flank a brick paper walkway leading to the house. The reason this is in front of you is because we have a public setback at that property, which is approximately five feet, and the homeowner is proposing to install those pillars within that setback closer to the sidewalk. As part of the process, this permit application goes in front of LAC and Preservation Commission. It has gone in front of both of them, and both commissions are against the installation of the pillars, so neither of them are for that. Including the packet are a couple diagrams and maps, but in essence, it would be a brick pillar of 1'8" square, and it would flank that walkway, so as part of the process, it then goes in front of the board for final decision, so that's where we're currently at.
Is the politician here?
Is the applicant here?
I do not believe so.
Questions of staff? Anyone from the public in attendance to speak to this? No? Discussion from trustees? You have recommendation from two commissions to deny this, and his request for hard structure pillars in the public right-of-way.
If two of our commission staff said no and the pitcher's not here to give an argument to overturn that, I don't see why I would be in favor of overturning it myself.
Agreed. It is definitely not within the, you know, concept of the general plan for Riverside to have structures in the public right-of-way. We have varying setbacks, you know, by design, and not just by annual design, but by the design of a landscape architect, master. So I, too, would agree with the preservation and LAC on this one.
And certainly it would be precedent-setting, as there's nothing unique about this situation that I could see that would separate it from most other properties in the village. Trustee Evans?
All right, also for consistency's sake, I know that we had to ask a resident to take down the structure in the, in the public right-of-way maybe a year or two ago. It's just not something that we should approve. You know, we need to make sure it's consistent.
Thank you. Someone like to, do we need a motion to deny?
I mean, you could say a motion to, if there's no motion made, that's it. It does not get approved. We have a motion, a resolution for approval. If you want to just memorialize saying a motion to deny the request, that'd be perfectly appropriate.
I'd like to reject the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Roll call.
Wait, question.
Question.
Since it's a negative, so if we say aye...
The motion is to reject, so an aye is in favor of the rejection. A nay would be opposing the rejection, so kind of a double negative.
Sorry, just wanted to clarify.
So if you're against the installation of the pillars, the vote is aye.
Thank you.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Well, the reason I made the motion is because I wanted this to be formalized.
I agree. Yeah.
Because of the precedent.
Aye.
Aye.
Jumping the gun.
Trustee Fitzgerald? Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Motion is approved, the permit application is denied. 11B, discussion on minor text amendments and process text amendments. Planner Siren?
In March of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission prioritized a list of zoning text amendments, and this was the first set that they recommended moving forward with. And just as a note, that list of text amendments included the PCC's work plan items, staff recommendations, and citizen requests. In May, PCC reviewed the text amendments and provided feedback and determined they're ready for a public hearing. The Preservation Commission reviewed them on June 12th and recommended approval. So the request tonight is that you provide feedback and direction on these amendments before the public hearing, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, July 28th. The purpose of the text amendments are to clarify existing standards, make them more consistent, establish standards for some infrequent situations, and make the application processes clear and more consistent. So we group these into two sections, minor text amendments and process, process having to do with applications. Our minor text amendments start with prohibiting, very, more explicitly prohibiting the use of fill to increase maximum building heights beyond what's allowable. There, this was a suggestion from PCC to clarify the code, it's not based on an enforcement issue or a problem that's come up, it was just a concern about folks trying to get around the rules for increasing building height. So we would add clarification in the language to explicitly prohibit fill to be used to exceed building height limits. Next is to allow more flexibility when connecting utilities to accessory buildings. This was based on a request from a homeowner, wanted, actually, I think two homeowners wanted to install EV charging stations in their garages. They found it to be more economical to set up that electrical service to a service pole at the back of their property instead of running the service from their house, which is the current requirement. So what this text amendment would do is eliminate the requirement to run utilities from the primary residence to the accessory building. As a matter of fact, I just got an email yesterday, or actually this afternoon, from a different homeowner who wants to run a water line out to a landmark coach house to provide service, which is allowed, and found also it would be more economical to run it from the main instead of the primary structure. So they would be able to do this if this minor amendment was approved. This is a very unique situation, but this would allow above-ground pool decks to be the same height as a pool. Decks are currently only allowed to be the height of the first floor of the house. If you have a ranch-style house and you had a above-ground pool behind your house, you'd only be allowed to have the deck up to the height of the house. So they want to have a multi-level deck that surrounds our above-ground pool that's connected to the house. It's an unusual situation, but the person who wanted to put it in asked for clarity in the code to clarify that they could allow that. We thought that was a reasonable request, given that most decks are about four to five feet at max anyway, and that's about the height of an above-ground pool, so it wouldn't be exceeding what you would normally put in for a tall deck. Next is to make our standards consistent. The zoning code only requires a five- or three-foot setback for swimming pools, the building code requires a 10-foot setback from all property lines. So it'd be amending the code to make sure that that 10-foot setback is listed in the zoning code to make those consistent. Next is to exempt a very specific type of building, a village-owned building used for public service in an area that I'll show you in the next slide, in Riverside Lawn, from the prohibited building materials list. So in the zoning code, if you have an area that is not zoned, it is considered part of the residential, it's considered the R1AA district, it's a residential standards. The list of residential zoning standards includes a list of prohibited building materials, and that list includes things like CMU or metal building panels, which is what we want to use to build the new Public Works Storage Building by the end of 2026. So they would have to obtain a variation if they wanted to do that. It seems like we could exempt a small area of the village from those prohibited building materials list. The area in orange here is in the village's jurisdiction, but it's not in a zoning district. You can see the Public Works Building called out there. So this amendment to the code would prohibit that area in orange only from being, from not being able to use the prohibited building materials only for village-owned buildings used for public services. So there's no other developments in the area in orange. We anticipate this would only apply to the Public Works Buildings on those side. And next is to remove the reference to the certificate of compliance process from the zoning code. We updated the municipal code earlier this year to update that process. One of the things we did was remove that zoning review from the certificate. we did was remove that zoning review from the certificate of compliance process, because that zoning process is no longer part of that, we don't need to reference it in the zoning code. What we'd be removing is a reference to the process. The compliance process would remain the same, it would remain the same as it was that you approved earlier in the municipal code earlier this year. That's the end of the minor process amendments, we have process text amendments. For text amendments and zoning map amendments, the zoning code includes a list of standards to use when reviewing those amendments. Some of them are redundant, and some of them are more administrative than useful for determining whether they should be approved, so we wanted to make that a little bit cleaner. And the amendments would also state that Preservation Commission must review the text amendments, that is an existing requirement that is listed in a different part of the municipal code, it is not listed in this part of the code for some reason, so we're just adding an existing requirement for clarity. Subdivision and lot combinations. So currently, subdivisions, where you divide parcels of land in lot combinations, have the same review standards. So what the amendment would do is not change the subdivision requirement, so you couldn't subdivide land any other way than you can right now, which involves a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission and a decision by the Village Board. What this would do is make lot combinations easier by only requiring review by the Village Board. So, just as an example of a situation, we've had a couple of these recently that came up. Blythe Park Elementary School. Each black box here represents a different parcel. So to combine those into one parcel, for example, right now, you'd have to have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, pay for the legal ad and legal work associated with that, and then come to the Village Board for a final decision. It seems administratively to be a burden to applicants who want to simply combine lots, which wouldn't be opposed to the general plan of Riverside that's been reviewed by the Preservation Commission, they said this is fine, and so this would make it a little bit easier for folks to do applications like that. The next is for special uses. Like text and map amendments, the zoning code includes a list of criteria to use when reviewing special uses. We would remove two unnecessary standards that are administrative. We would also extend the approval expiration from 180 days to 365 days. And the reason for that is to match the approval of variations. A year is very common in the planning world for that kind of approval. Very frequently, we have applications that come forward, for example, the Starbucks application. Their application had a site plan review, and I'll talk about that in a minute, had variations, and it had special use, and the variation and special use expired at different times. So it makes sense to give an entire year. The Village Board can approve a one, 365-day extension if these amendments are approved, given good cause. This is another application extension for planning and developments. You just approved an extension of the planning and development for 20 to 30 East Burlington Street, that was 180 days, this was extended to 365 with an option for one, one-year extension. Site plan review. The code currently states that site plan review applications must be reviewed by the PCC within 30 days of submittal. This is a mismatch from the amount of time that the PCC would need to notice and review variations and special uses, which frequently go hand-in-hand with site plan reviews, so this would make all of those review times 60 days. And finally, procedures for landmark designation, so the Preservation Commission must hold a public hearing on Riverside historical landmark applications within 30 days of their preliminary meeting. The problem is those need to be legally noticed, which requires more time, and the Preservation Commission only meets once every other month, so it makes that scheduling that very difficult, so we're recommending to extend that to 60 days to match other applications that require public notice. So again, we're just, I'm requesting your feedback and direction before we move forward to the public hearing. We would have that public hearing on July 23rd, and then return to you in August for a vote on the ordinance to adopt these amendments.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I just have one clarification. So you're going to have a process easier for combining parcels?
That's the intention.
But dividing them, what's the process for that?
Would remain the same.
Okay. This makes a lot of sense to me, I like this.
I think this was a lot of really good work. It looks good.
I agree. Kudos to staff. And PCC.
And there's more to come.
Yes.
Got a nice long list.
And please, give, thank you, Planner Siren, but thanks, Planning and Zoning Commission, this is housekeeping, but housekeeping's important.
Yes, thank you.
We do have, that completes our agenda for this evening, we do have need for an executive session this evening to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired pursuant to Section 2C5, to discuss probable imminent or pending litigation. The Board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place, so I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We are adjourned.